Mr. Lebey?
Yeah.
Mr. Zacco? Mr. Kitchin?
Yeah.
Mr. Bagwell?
Here.
Mr. Moran?
Yeah.
Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Mr. Hogan?
Here.
Mr. Sheen?
Here. Uh, Mr. Richardson, anybody signed up for public appearance, sir?
Negative.
Thank you, sir. School Committee Communications, are there any communications? Hearing none, moving along. Uh, report of the student representative, he, uh, we don't have one anymore because school is out.
Playing hooky.
Um, approval of minutes.
Was there a excuse me or report?
Oh yeah, there's something in your, uh, packet that you can read.
Celebration, yeah, celebrating graduation.
Uh, approval of minutes, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from May sixteenth?
Motion.
Second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, unanimous. Report of the treasurer. I have a motion to waive the reading of the warrant.
Motion.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, unanimous.
Motion.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, unanimous. Do I have a motion to approve the expenditures of ten million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-six pounds and fifty-one cents?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, unanimous. Uh, report to general counsel, we're waiting, let's later on, right? Thank you, sir. Uh, superintendent, director, Davis, go right ahead.
Sure, thank you. Uh, the first item on my agenda this evening is the Cooperative Education Report, which is in your packages. And the May report, uh, indicates that a hundred and thirty junior students representing twenty-three percent of the class of two thousand and twenty-five, uh, were out on co-op at the end of the school year. So those are great numbers for Greater Little Technical High School, and hopefully we can start the, the school year with just as many juniors who would be the new seniors out on co-op. Any questions about the co-op report?
It seems like we're way ahead of last year.
So, I think we're, for juniors, we're equally the same. What I can say is that, uh, fifty point five percent of the senior class had a cooperative education opportunity. So that's a number that we haven't reached in the past.
That's unbelievable.
Yeah.
Nice work.
The next item on my, my, my agenda, I'm, I'm asking for the committee's approval of the proposed, uh, school resource officer M O A, or memorandum of understanding, uh, which is in your, uh, packages. Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in, uh, sorry, questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, unanimous.
The next item on my agenda is, uh, the Greater Little Technical High School Practical Nursing, uh, handbook for, for your review. Any questions on changes to the Practical Nursing Handbook?
Second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay. Uh, the next item on my agenda, I'd like to ask the Assistant Superintendent Principal, Mr. Michael Borton, to come forward to discuss, uh, to, to discuss and ask for your approval, uh, some specific handbooks. And Mike will review each one of them with you.
Sure, good evening, everyone. So I have several items for you today for approval. Uh, the first item are proposed changes for the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five Athletic Handbook. Um, that is the first pa- item in your packet. The minor changes, well, actually major changes are the, the wonderful addition of extra sports or additional sports that we're offering next season. Um, junior varsity golf, unified basketball, unified strength and conditioning, which takes place in the winter, unified track, which began this year and is continuing as an official sport next year. And then another one that was, uh, really well received this year was, um, girls' flag football. So we're asking permission to add those to the actual Athletic Handbook as official sports. The next item that's an addition here is a M I A A requirement to include diversity, equity, and inclusion pledge, uh, as well as the M I A A taunting policy. So these are circumstances or items that are associated with, uh, cultural diversity, ethnic diversity, as well as inclusion in sports and equity. And then the additional item is just some clarity in terms of the right to appeal discipline in athletics. So for example, if a student is, um, found to be in violation of some offense that's deemed an offense to, uh, the coach or the team in the Athletic Handbook, um, there's a process, and that process has been clarified. First, um, they obviously have the right to appeal the suspension or expulsion. Number two, the, um, opportunity for an athlete to discuss with the coach to try to resolve any problem is first and foremost, so instead of going straight to the principal or the superintendent or the A D, they should start with the coach. Then it should go to, um, the athletic director if there's any potential problem that continues. And it goes to the principal, and then ultimately the final arbiter is the superintendent. So it's just some clarity and steps so that students, student athletes understand that they need to start with the coach rather than just going to the principal or going to the superintendent. So that's some clarity that was added. The next piece in it is we're removing, um, the six four nine seven one 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 number to call in case of emergency. That was the number that would go to Tinsboro Dispatch. Um, we've been informed by the chief of the fire department that nine one one is operable both internally and externally throughout the entire campus. So we're asking everyone to dial nine one one, and that's been in place for several months now, but I'm asking to put it into this handbook officially. Um, and then the last pieces, second to last piece are the inclusion of additional A E Ds throughout the campus. Um, one by the storage bin near Project Adventure, as well as the softball field. And this is some clarity on, on telephone numbers to call. So I'm looking for approval for that, uh, Athletic Handbook.
Make the motion.
Second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have several things for you today, as I said. Uh, the next one is the proposed changes from, uh, policies on head injuries and concussions. Um, main theme associated with this particular change is, uh, greater detail and clarity in terms of the language that's, um, put forth in the state that we're including in our policy. But first and foremost, um, prior to this, it was for athletics, and now they're including extracurriculars. So any extracurricular that's happening on campus, um, both students and parents need to be trained, which is, um, something that we've done in the past, but it applies to extracurriculars, as well as all extracurricular coaches, um, or extracurricular activities, co- activities directors, um, need to have training in concussion, as well as sign off on training in concussions. And that's one of the major changes. An additional change is the timeline that is required for reporting of concu- concussions. The letters of affirmation have been, uh, further detailed that we have to do to report to the state. And then lastly, the concussion reporting protocol is in greater detail in this policy as well. So, um, a lot of it is similar, but there's those major changes that I wanted to ask for your approval to include.
Make the motion. Second.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, unanimous.
Okay, thank you. So the third item is the School Improvement Plan, uh, it's the Annual School Improvement Plan. So this document is, um, comprised under my direction, um, really in kind of a twofold process. The first process involves, uh, once a month evening meetings with community members, um, students, teachers, as well as, um, members of, um, I'm sorry, members of the faculty and myself. Uh, we meet once a month to go over, um, aspects that they're collectively interested in terms of improving in the school. It can be things associated with community and culture. It can be things associated with, uh, academics, technical programs. Alongside that, I also have a committee of instructors and counselors and paraprofessionals that meet after school. And my job is to take all of their ideas and suggestions and kind of put it all together in a major plan. Um, so the result of their hard work and time and effort is this plan. Um, so with your permission, I'd just like to go through it. Um, it's really comprised of four parts. Some of it is, most of it is very familiar with you, but there's some enhancement to it. And essentially, this is sort of the driving force for what's done, um, not only the past year, but into the next school year. So, um, the first part has to do with project-based learning. Um, you may recall that we've done a considerable amount of work in project-based learning in the school. Um, project-based learning is essentially a method of instruction that involves collective groups of students to center around challenging questions associated with, uh, building things, presenting things, thinking about things in both technical and academic programs. Um, we were lucky enough to get a grant three years ago where we were the only technical school in Massachusetts to get this grant, where we worked with, um, a company to develop curriculum associated, associated around project-based learning. So far, we've had close to ninety teachers trained. We've had presentations in the mall area associated with project-based learning, kids have presented, they've done computer projects, they've done poster board projects, they talk about them, they speak about them. We've had experts come in and kind of evaluate them. So, um, we're looking to enhance this a bit. We've realized that, um, we need to maybe focus a little bit more on the, um, finer points of a project, the details in a project, the comfortability of students speaking about those projects. So, um, that is the first priority to continue P B L work, but also to enhance it and make it even, um, more detailed. Um, just on a side, it's been very well received by both students and, and staff members. Um, so that's the first part. The second part, um, is another piece that we've been doing a lot of work on, and that is grading. And questions about how do kids understand what their grade means? What is the grade comprised of? How did you arrive at the grade? What can you do to potentially get your grades up and make things better? Specifically, um, this one has to do with employability, uh, which I think is really, I think we'd all agree is really important in our school district, especially not only in the, really just all encompassing in the, in our school district. So we're looking for, um, a little bit more detail about what actually employability means to a kid? What does it mean to a staff member? What does it look like? Does it mean dressing right, coming to school on time, coming to class on time? Does it mean being able to speak comfortably, asking good questions? Um, so what we're planning on, on doing is really narrowing it down collectively as a school, getting kind of a consensus in the school on what does this piece called employability mean? How do kids get graded on it? And then how can we assure that we're doing as much as we can to make sure kids feel comfortable getting cooperative education jobs or, um, jobs after school, jobs post-grad, uh, post-graduating from here? So we really need to drill down on that more. So we're really kind of isolating it, putting it under the microscope and trying to make it better.
Yes, are we getting any feedback from our employers? Because I know, you know, the world's about employability and preparing our kids, how to dress, how to show up on time, and so on and so forth. But I believe, you know, then they sort of get a co-op opportunity, they go to work. And then sometimes the employers like them, sometimes the employers may not like them. Um, are we getting any fo- feedback from the employers so that we can sort of, you know, begin to drill down? And then offer that, you know, more so moving forward as years progress?
Yeah, I, I think definitely we have. Um, and I think it's very valuable to do so and kind of grasp that from them. Particularly from our co-op director, she has shared with me and others, uh, feedback associated with students' confidence level, um, making sure that they can, um, not only put together a resume and dress right and present well, but feeling sort of confident to be able to answer questions in a professional and direct manner, being able to sort of present the best side of oneself in job interviews, um, as well as things like making sure that after getting the job, that you feel that you are going to be able to communicate with your employer when you're feeling ill or you have some sort of emergency. How is the employer expecting you to communicate? Communication is like a real key piece to this. Do they expect like a text message? They expect you to call them? Do they expect you to, um, you know, how to conduct yourself, both verbally as well as in, in, in all manners? So that's, that's a key piece, like that's sort of soft skill. And, uh, that is from the top of my mind, one of the key pieces of that. As far as content goes, like knowing the trade, knowing, um, academic schools, I get, I hear thumbs up all the time. Um, but I think it's centered around the, the kind of communication piece and the confidence level piece, um, which I think is improved, but it's still some areas of work.
Is the co-op director getting feedback and offering back to the administrators?
Yes, like Mike said, he, she shared some of that feedback with him.
Yeah, for sure.
Good.
So it's around communication.
Do you go beyond just, uh, the kids that are out on co-op? Do you want, you know, to a wider industrial base?
So one thing that I think we could, um, probably dig a little deeper in is doing some post-graduation focus groups. So sort of taking students who have graduated from here, they may be in the workforce, and giving them an opportunity to come back and provide, um, an actual forum to deliver what their experience has been like. That is, um, something that I think we could probably be a little bit more stronger on, and would result in some pretty strong feedback. We've done a good job meeting with the kids that are internally here, kind of getting their sense of things here. But as far as graduates go, if I think I understand your question correctly, is an area that we could probably do some work on.
I'm just thinking if your co-
I'm in interruption with David, Tinsel at the security, pick up an item, thank you.
If your co-op kids are in one particular field, plumbing, it's a small universe, you know? Can you reach out to non-employee participants and see what's needed or required in the field?
Yeah, I think so.
Plumbing is a pretty wide field.
It, it is, I think you're, I think you're definitely right on that. Um, through the advisory boards, we get a lot of feedback from, from people. Um, people who have knowledge of our graduates, but people who are just in the field in general. So the advisory boards are a really good source of, of that, but-
To get feedback.
Yeah. Thank you. So the third, the, um, sorry, the, yes, the third one, um, has to do with student leadership and the connection between student leaders and students and, um, the overall community of the school. Again, you may recall, um, several years ago, we started a student leadership program in our summer enrichment program. So we started, um, several years ago, the opportunity of giving, um, students who were identified as having leadership potential an opportunity to work side by side with an instructor during the summertime. And they worked side by side with them, kind of assisting them during our summer enrichment program. And the culminating, uh, activity was they led a tour of the incoming eighth graders. So we have, as ma- um, several hundred incoming eighth graders come in July, this year it happens to be August. And these kids led a tour throughout the building all on their own. And that was their sort of capstone project, if you will, for the, for the summer program. That has built and grown over the course of several years, to the point where in the beginning we had like twelve or fifteen. Now we have well over, I believe, sixty to seventy. They were actually here today for a two-day training voluntarily. Um, so the, the challenge has been, how do you take what you do in the summertime and then bring it during the course of the school year? And for a variety of reasons, that's been more challenging than one might expect because many of the kids either have aft- after-school jobs during the course of the school year or they have athletics or extracurriculars. So we have kind of a competing, competing commitment. So what we're looking at doing is offering some leadership curriculum in the course of the school day. Perhaps with a speaker series, uh, where kids who have been identified or self-identified that they want to come to a speaker who talks about leadership scenarios or leadership, people in leadership capacities and jobs and positions in civic life can come and talk, and these kids can benefit from that. So we're looking at expanding that during the course of the school year. The second piece to this program is, um, to talk about One Trusted Adult, which is a book that the leadership team is reading this summer. It's written, um, by a local individual from New Hampshire, and it's a book that talks about why it's important for schools to have one trusted adult, who they feel that they can talk to in a professional manner with boundaries, but, um, can kind of feel comfortable enough to speak to them about a problem that they may have or something that makes them uneasy, or something that confuses them, um, again with strong boundaries, so that they feel that they can do that. We've done a lot of, uh, work with students in terms of focus groups. We've done a lot of work with students in terms of surveys, and we've discovered that, um, although several, several, several large, large percentages of students feel comfortable, safe, and welcome here, there's a small percentage that feel that they could have a stronger connection with a counselor or a teacher or a coach or someone. So we're doing some, um, concentrated effort in that by reading this book. And then the first day of school, the author is coming to speak, her name is Brooklyn Rainey. She's coming to speak to the staff on the first day of school. And then we're gonna have breakout sessions where we'll talk more about her talk and the work that's in her book. So that's, um, that particular standard that we're focused on. And then the last one, um, deals again with some significant work associated with mental health that we've been on the, I think, and I think the superintendent would probably agree that we've been on the forefront since COVID, probably, I would say even before COVID, um, kind of foreseeing the mental health crisis that's impacted the United States and the world, um, particularly in, um, high schools and girls particularly. To do some work with a universal screener. So what that means is students that are entering the building or who've been here, they'll take an assessment that screens for at-risk behaviors associated with suicide or drugs or alcohol, trauma, things of that nature, so that, uh, it can more readily identify kids who are at risk so that we can attempt to put in mental health resources for them. So that's something that's a goal for next year, we have that ready to roll out. So, and instead of, essentially, instead of waiting for students to be in crisis or come to us if they, sometimes don't always, we would be make, doing a proactive approach at identifying kids that are at risk and providing resources for them. So that's a lot. Um, I know, uh, I wanted to go, I probably, maybe talked a little bit more than I should have, but that's a lot of detail, uh, associated with a lot of work that people have done. And it's, um, a driving force for what we do into the next school year. So the people who did it, um, should be applauded because they put in lots of effort and lots of hours in putting that together.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that report, thank you for that. Um, really digging in and sharing with us what the goals are for the school, this upcoming year. We're all very proud of what we, what we, the administration does here and what the students do here. And, um, I want to put in a motion to accept the School Improvement Plan.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the last item I have for you is the school, um, I'm sorry, the student handbook. So the student handbook is, um, the policies that are outlined, uh, by the school district with your approval. Um, there are some changes here. Uh, the first change is essentially some language identifying locations of the building. The next piece, which comes directly out of our N I S C report, you may recall that every ten years, we go through the new E S process. Um, in five years, there's a review. Um, one of the requirements in our most recent N I S C report was to do school-wide learning expectations. Um, at a previous meeting, um, we had gone over the school-wide learning expectations. But these are included in the student handbook, and they have things that are associated with academic and career, social learning skills, civic-minded learning skills, uh, that are included here. Things associated with proficiency in learning, academics and technical programming, relationships in terms of respect and cooperative, cooperation with each other, and then honesty and accountability. They mirror our core values, we had created them, so we're looking to include these in the student handbook. The next piece changed, the student handbook, is just an additional statement regarding cellphone policy. Currently in the building as terms of cellphones, the cellphones are allowed before school, after school, and during lunch. So if a student has a cellphone out before school, during lunch, and after school, that's permitted. Um, individual instructors have their own cellphone policy, uh, not necessarily policy, but procedure that they manage inside their classrooms. Every instructor in the building has access to a cellphone box. And I don't know if you've ever seen these, but they're typically mounted to a wall. They have electricity, and a student can place the cellphone in the box and it charges. Every instructor has been afforded one of those boxes for over two years now. Most people have them. Some do, very few don't have it. And it's really up to the teacher, you know, or counselor to decide how they want to manage that. Um, they can have students put the cellphone box in when they arrive at school, they can do it. Um, when they arrive at class, it's really their own management and policy, uh, procedure. If they, a student doesn't comply, um, they can take that into, um, their progressive discipline or management policy, procedure. They can, um, depending on what's outlined in their, um, outline or what their individual procedure is, they can call parents, they can utilize the main office. Um, but really internally within their classroom, it is their procedure to follow and to execute and to describe to the students. So that statement is included there, um, it has not been included in the past, but it's in there now. Students are familiar with individual instructors' procedures. Um, if you talk to students, I've talked to students extensively about this. They know how the individual instructor operates. Some are perhaps more regimented, you walk in, you put the cellphone in the box. Some may or may not be, they may allow it to be in their bag. Cellphones can be used on a limited basis for educational purposes if the instructor allows it. That's something that's within their, you know, within their latitude as a professional. But, um, that's in addition to the student handbook. And the last piece in it is the universal screener that I had just described, the mental health screening. Um, it describes the student's opportunity, if they want to bow out of that, they can do it. Um, it's voluntary, most students choose to do it anyway. Um, and if parents don't want their child to participate, they have the right to do that as well. Okay? And then the last piece is the addition of the athletics that I had already described in the Athletic Handbook. Yep, and lastly, uh, there's some changes to our, our additions to our breakfast, school, lunch program in terms of mainly, uh, the application process, but mainly what do you do if you've been a withdrawn student or a graduate student? How do you go get a potential rebate if you didn't use all of your money? What's the process for that? And that is, um, outlined in this with Ms. Partridge, she was in charge of that, so that's all described here.
Nothing's changed about that, as you said earlier.
No, it's universal free lunch.
It's still free.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the kids get the free breakfast, that's-
Yeah.
The last line sort of interested me, the à la carte, does that present a problem? I mean, first paragraph, food service, last line in red.
Oh, if someone wants an item and they need to pay for it? Uh, well, that would be on their card, and they would pay for it based on what it costs.
So that's in addition to, so, so all students are entitled to one free breakfast and one free lunch. If they choose to desire more food, that food is for purchase.
Like chips or cookies or something like that, or like- Like chips, or cookies, or something like that, or like fruit?
Is there flexibility with that?
Can you elaborate on the question? Flexibility in what sense?
If Curtis shows up for breakfast, and he doesn't have adequate nutrition at home...
He gets the one free breakfast.
Yeah. Curtis might need that second one.
He's got to pay for it.
I'm only picking on you, Curtis.
That's all right.
I'm going to ask people.
You got to pay for it.
Maybe his buddy don't want his breakfast, so he'd need to do it.
I'm sure that goes on all day.
Yeah.
You know, we're paying for the initial...
I'm just looking to make sure the kid is probably...
So the universal free lunch program clearly outlines that it's one free breakfast and one free lunch. So we, we follow the rules that were brought forth by the study to us.
Thanks to Palmerwell for...
Yes.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chandler.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more questions or comments? Here are none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Thank you, sir. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike.
I know, I'm going to have another piece of pizza.
What about the one you put in your car?
All right. So for tonight, I just have one item for you, and that's just a substantial list of transfers. I'm getting toward the end of the year here with our budget, so I'm aligning expenditures from the accounts where we might have had savings to where we ended up actually spending.
Maybe you missed a transfer.
Yeah, well, seems like it lately. But if there are any questions on any specific line items, feel free to let me know, and if not, I'll just need an approval to make the transfers as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, unanimous?
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Anybody have anything for old business? Anybody have anything for new business? Any motions? Reports of any subcommittees? There are none. All right. So we're going to go into executive session in a minute here. Item number one is executive session pursuant to Master General Law's 30A, 21A, and 3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a judgmental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so does declare. All right, let's go to the next one. Number two is an executive session pursuant to Master General Law's 30A, section 21A and 3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so does declare. National Personnel Educational Support Section. And number three is executive session pursuant to Master General Law's 30A, sections 21A and 2 to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel or conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. That will be Title I facilitator. We will return into regular session to take some votes. We're just going to go into executive session.
Motion.
Second, all in favor, please say aye. Close, unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Back in in a little while. Back in a little while. Back in a little while.